All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's just a little after 5:30, so we'll go ahead and get the meeting called to order. Thanks everybody for being here for our June 17th fourth meeting. It's hard to wait for halfway through the month of June already. As we get ready to kick off them, I'll ask Kirk Anderson, if you would, lead us in our implication of prayer. And then when he finishes, Phil Dean, will you lead us in flag with him?
Absolutely.
That's great. Thank you Heavenly Father for letting us gather together here. Please, Lord, watch over these proceedings and put your hand on them, Lord. Please help us with the decisions that are made here, Lord, make this a better home, community. Please, Lord, watch over all these that serve here and abroad. Thank you, Lord, for all you've given us, in thy heavenly name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we go into our agenda for the meeting tonight, if they have one amendment I would like to propose, that would be an amendment under new business, item J would be to consider our September 4th meeting date. Right now it's September 16th, which is during the fall break, and all three of us are made to take it. So I do believe we're going to have a couple out of town and want to make sure that we consider that September 16th to the 23rd. So that will be an amendment to go as item J. Oh, correction, I'm sorry. K comes after J, since we already have J on the agenda. Item K under new business, and we add that item to the agenda. That's the only amendment that I have. You guys have anything that you would like to consider? With that, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved. A second.
Moving to second. Any discussion?
Sam glad you're married to a teacher and you have some alphas.
She doesn't bring work. Then all in favor? I have to push and carry. Agenda is approved. We do have, as one of the items is to then start a public hearing. We have amendments to chapter 67 of the Pickens County Code of Ordinances. Mr. Charles Reese, our planning and development director, is going to go through a presentation for the board, and then we'll open up for any comments at that point and close that out afterwards. So, Mr. Reese.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our staff was tasked in doing some research and gathering information to consider solar farms and crypto mining as conditional uses that we can add to our overall code of ordinances. But to put that in context, I have prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation. Just to introduce everyone with these two uses that are... These two uses are trending in the state of Georgia, pretty much the whole country, as uses that are permitted in the industrial zone. We're considering permitting these, you were considering permitting these two uses as conditional use. So, we started the first slide. Crypto mining and solar generating facilities as conditional uses within the industrial zoning district. I don't know about the zoners.
I can advance it if you need me.
Next page, Chris. Thank you, sir. So, why update the code of ordinances? Well, zoning ordinances should be flexible and updated periodically to reflect the evolving needs of a community and its region. Failure to adapt zoning rules can lead to problems like conflicting land uses and potential legal uses from developers. It's important to keep the zoning map and regulations current to prevent adverse outcomes and falling behind in growing trends. And I must say, throughout my career, we've had several instances where we had to be proactive instead of reactive. And just to give you an example, when I was in Cherokee County, I think it was in the early 2000s, a developer came in and said, "What do you feel about doing, us having a Taco Bell with a KFC?" And at first we were thinking, oh, that's crazy, no way. Now what do you see today? You see shared uses. You'll see a Shell gas station with a Wendy's and a Pizza Hut along with it. So what we had to do was be proactive. We knew that the ordinance that we had was archaic. And there are times where you have to kind of do some reassessment, some reevaluation, to make sure that we're up with the times. And along with being up with the times, making sure that the regulations we have also fit the well-being and the welfare of our community. Zoning ordinances are local laws that indeed bear a regional and often national impact. These ordinances are comprehensive in nature and affect land use, development, and growth of the jurisdiction and its region. Although ordinances represent a short-sighted or myopic view of the political body, zoning should be a flexible and dynamic process. As the physical and economic characteristics of a community change, so too must its zoning rules, as I said earlier, and maps change to accommodate these fluctuating forces. Next slide. Why conditional uses? Well, the concept of conditional uses or conditional zoning allows local governments to permit certain special uses in specific districts, subject to conditions, standards, and a review process. This allows for greater control over permitted uses to mitigate adverse effects. This authority is based on enabling legislation, and it's typically outlined in our zoning ordinances. Next slide. So the first use that you all would be considering to add is crypto mining. Crypto mining. You may have heard of cryptocurrencies like Bitcoin, Ethereum, and Litecoin. What you may not know is the process of creating these digital assets, which includes mining. Mining involves validating and recording blockchain transactions in exchange for earning new currency and transaction fees. While previously it could be done on personal computers, the complexity now requires purpose-built hardware, raising concerns about energy consumption. Nonetheless, there are benefits to allowing crypto mining in industrial zoning districts. And let me throw out there, it is controversial right now because various jurisdictions in Georgia are really trying to grasp this new idea. And we're all trying to work out how we can allow this without adversely having an adverse negative impact to our communities. The next use that you all will be considering are solar facilities. Solar farms, also known as photovoltaic power stations, are large-scale arrays of solar photovoltaic or PV panels that convert light directly into electricity. These large ground-mounted installations are developed in rural areas mostly with access to transmission lines. And I do have experience when I was working in as planning zoning administrator for City of Harley. We had just approved an ordinance as a conditional use for solar farms. We had entered into a contract, the city entered into a contract with Georgia Power to provide this use as a conditional one. So this is another use that you begin to see all around Georgia, especially in agricultural industrial areas. So, next slide. Why conditional use? Why conditional use? Conditional uses are those uses that, because of their potential impact on a community, require specific review and authorization on a case-by-case basis by the local legislative body or an appropriate board. In this case, it will be the Board of Commissioners. This usually should be the local planning board and staff, which will make a recommendation in the form of a report to the local legislative body with the ultimate decision-making responsibility. You all again. In many typical ordinances, a permitted conditional use requires more than just a review of the use itself. Certain zoning determinations must be made by local administrative staff and planning boards. Conditional uses require specific review and authorization, again, on a case-by-case basis. The purpose of conditional uses within a zoning ordinance is to allow some flexibility in the application of the regulations to permit suitable uses in specified districts. In this case, we're looking at possibly the industrial zoning district. If the concerns are not relevant or can be mitigated, the planning commission, staff, and legislative body should cooperate to grant the conditional use permit. Next slide.
That's the last.
And that's the last slide. So...
And I can move you straight into our agenda again.
So I was presenting that information just to give us a heads-up of what actually these uses are and the reasoning behind the consideration. If you all considered these two uses as conditional uses for only the industrial zoning district.
So I think before I open the comments, one of the things to point out with the new nature, especially with the crypto mining, and it's always been around longer than the crypto mining. The ACCG actually released through some of their districts, model ordinances to put in place so that you could help regulate. I know we work directly with the southeast Georgia.
If I may interject.
Yeah.
If I may interject. The draft that you all have is pretty much based out of the Southern Georgia Regional Commission. Their model ordinances, their model ordinance for Georgia cities and counties to consider if they make that decision to include into their overall code of ordinances. So what you all have is actually a model of that said ordinance. We also did research, as I said, City of Harley, when I was zoning administrator there, it would be adopted in Sandersville, Waycross. There are several jurisdictions that have used this model ordinance. So that's pretty much where we gather our information.
And I know that's an area that has been, especially with the solar side things in South Georgia, because the large flatland is much more rare in North Georgia, but it is still happening in some places. So we felt like it was good to make sure we had defined the area and defined use within the ordinance so that if someone does come in and apply, it's not just an objective determination with the planning office. It's actually the final code. And so that was the purpose behind it. And I know that the draft has kind of been provided for you guys to review. And we may have a little bit more when we get to that item on the agenda in the future as far as tableing until next month, just to kind of tweak and fine-tune and reach out to some other counties and make sure the language that we have in there. But we did feel like it was a good idea to go ahead and move forward with the public hearing of presenting that draft. So if you guys have any questions for Charles before I open it up, any public comment on the public hearing?
It's like, great job presenting, and I'm looking forward to diving in and reading this like very closely.
No problem at all. And thanks to our attorneys that get in contact with us, make sure we spell the words correctly.
So with that, since it is a public hearing, in this particular, I'm all over the numbers before. If anybody has any public comment that would like to make. With no public hearing, then do I have a motion that we close the public hearing portion of the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Charles, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. Right, we'll dive on into our regular agenda and keep flowing further. Now we have nothing on our consent agenda or old business tonight. When we get into new business, we do have a handful of items. First of which is employee recognition. Before we dive in, we do have one that we've tried now a couple of times to present, but they work, they're in the fire service and weren't too different full-time. They're full-time with us and full-time with another agency. So I think we could keep adding him on the agenda repeatedly to try to recognize him for 20 years of service, and he's still going to continue to not be able to be here for our meeting whenever we do it, unless it happens to follow the shift that he's working. But we have Bobby Scott, who has been with our fire service now for 20 years. I'd like to make sure we publicly recognize him. I know Sloan and Chief Brayden are both going to present him with his certificate, with his award. Either he just is working a lot, or he just doesn't want to be recognized publicly. But we're going to recognize him at least verbally. 20 years in the fire service is a phenomenal accomplishment. So I'd like to recognize that. I know we have two auditors that want to recognize employees. We've got our tax commissioner here tonight wanting to recognize one of his employees. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Penry.
Thank you, as always, for Commissioners for allowing us to do this. And without, you know, saying every time we come in, what it takes to become employee of the quarter, the rules, whatnot, you know, I want to say that we have a really good staff. Our staff is really good in our office, and I really appreciate them and the work that they do. So in order to win this, it's merit-based. It's not something that we just pick and say, okay, we want so-and-so to get it this time. We want so-and-so to get it next time. They have to earn it. And so the winner for quarter one this full round was Mary Jo Dillard. And she's hard to find because she answers it before it rains. And she's very aggressive when she calls the customers. She's really trying to get them. So she's one that'll come out the parking lot and ask why you didn't come to her window. But she is really aggressive when it comes to pulling the customers. I hear her all day long, I can still hear. So they're really, really, they try to win this. And they're very competitive. They have great customer service, and she's done a really, really good job. You know, she's not even been here quite two years yet. This is the second time she's won it. She won it for a few months of being an employee of our office. So she does a great job in the office. She has good customer service. She does good work. And so we want to present her. This is the bragging rights. This is what they brag on each other with. And they got the recognition that they put on their desk. So this is a certificate saying we got employee of the quarter. And we got the get out of jail free card, which is a day off paid. And we do a gift card to spend on that day off. So we want to let Mary know how much we appreciate her and the hard work that she's done of becoming employee of the quarter.
Everybody gets a picture that you can... I noticed you were trying to raise your hand. Congratulations. And then we also have our chief marshal has a recognition. So Joe, we would have wanted it.
Commissioners, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to come today and bring something to highlight something from the commissioners' or from the marshal's office that's kind of important to me, something that Commissioners Hansel and I talked about and I would draw on board is trying to, you know, increase our partnerships with all of our entities, whether it be the city, sheriff's office. And one thing that I'm really proud of is I feel like our division has done a good job in reaching out to the sheriff's office, to Jasper Police Department, Georgia State Patrol, building those relationships so that we can all work together. So tonight I'm here to issue a commendation. I'm going to read that, and I'm going to read a couple more things real quick. On Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, officers from the Jasper Police Department were dispatched to the microtale of Jasper in reference to a welfare check on a disabled adult female subject who was later determined to be missing. I was contacted by Deputy Marshal Cheyenne Evans, who informed me of the incident and requested permission to go assist JPD with the search. Deputy Marshal Evans assisted in locating the female subject who had wandered away from her room and had entered an unoccupied room elsewhere in the motel based on information that she gained from reviewing video surveillance footage. Upon contact, the female was confused, disoriented, and scared. Deputy Evans was able to establish a rapport with the female, earn her trust, and assist with getting the female to the hospital for evaluation. As Deputy Marshal Evans' supervisor, I was contacted by both Chief Matt Dawkins and Sergeant Jimmy Long with the Jasper Police Department. Both the chief and sergeant shared the gratitude for the assistance that Deputy Marshal Evans provided on June 4th and stated that Evans' contributions were vital to their investigation and expressed sincere appreciation for Evans. At this time, I would like to read the letter of commendation that was written by Sergeant Jimmy Long from the Jasper Police Department. On June 4th, 2024, Deputy Marshal Evans assisted with the search for a disabled person at the microtale. During the search, the patient was located by Deputy Marshal, excuse me, Deputy Marshal Evans and Jasper Police. She was able to establish rapport with the patient and gain needed information for the patient's health and well-being. The investigation is still continuing, but I believe that Deputy Marshal Evans provided the details needed to begin the investigation. During her time there, Deputy Marshal Evans displayed professionalism, courtesy, and diligence for the investigation and the search for the patient. Deputy Marshal Evans rode with the patient to the hospital, where she remained with her until medical professionals could assist. I would like to thank the Pickens County Marshal's Office for their assistance in this case, and thank Deputy Marshal Evans. So Deputy Marshal Evans, I'd like for you to come up. If you don't mind, I know you like attention.
I'm still trying to figure out how you got to the meeting.
I really don't know.
I may have correct. So I've got a plaque for you. I'll read it out. Certificate of Commendation Presented to Deputy Marshal Cheyenne Evans in recognition of the outstanding assistance provided to the Jasper Police Department on Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, resulting in a missing person being located. Your service and dedication to the Pickens Marshal's Office and the community you serve is greatly appreciated. Just want you to know how much I appreciate you. I love you. Thanks.
I can use a better one.
You guys want a better picture?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. You hold it there and I'll shake. Very perfect. Thank you.
All right now. We have two more.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We do have some incredible men and women in workforce that we get to recognize enough. And you can tell they all get really excited when they have a chance to stand up. But I want to thank everybody for that and look forward to many more commendations we provide. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. It's consideration of a statewide mutual aid assistance agreement. This was provided to us from our EMA Director. And it is just basically an update to the mutual aid agreement that is in place currently. The state of Georgia is requesting that each county work directly with one another in being prepared for managing an emergency or disaster occurring within each particular subdivision, arising from natural disaster, technology hazard, human-caused disasters, emergency community disorder, insurgents, enemy attacks, acts of terrorism, or other specific events or homeland security activities. This is a request that the state is working with all different local governments, both counties and cities, but especially all EMA offices that have an EMA office that is in your jurisdiction. The kind of assistance is including personnel, equipment, facilities, services, supplies, number of resources furnished to the requesting party. This agreement, for instance, if Gilmer County were to have an incident of an EMA, a natural disaster, and we were able to provide assistance and send people, this agreement would be in place to do that. I know that the agreement was placed in your package for you to review prior to coming through. So I'm going to read through the entire eight-page document, but wanted to have had a chance to review the mutual aid agreement and ask for a motion to approve.
I can motion to approve. A second.
Moving to second. Do I have any discussion or questions related to... All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on. Next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of water supply contract with LJ Gilmer County. There are two separate items. Item C is for the connection point in Yukon and Jones Mountain, where the county line is. The second, item D, is going to be in a location, Mount Piska and Swan Bridge Road, which is a new established connection point between the two water systems. The terms of the agreement have also been provided in place in your packet as well. Two-year agreement between Pickens County and the LJ Gilmer County Water and Sewer Authority. We have had a vertical agreement, I guess, for many years that have been in place on Jones Mountain, where we have previously been provided water all through this time. It's just not been a formal written agreement. Up to this point, the written agreement has came forward as we were working to provide secondary location. Their authority actually passed a resolution requiring written agreements with any of their partners that purchase water from them. You can see in the rate, the rate for the first 2 million gallons used is 221 per thousand gallons. It tiers up, then from 2 million to 4 million is 226 per thousand gallons. It tiers up between 4 billion and 5 million to 231 per thousand gallons. Anything above 5 million gallons will be 250 per thousand. This is an increase from the previous rate. The state EPD has now changed the monitoring for filtration for PFAS to go into their systems. They're having to do a major upgrade into that, which did affect the rates. I know that as we discussed our Calvin Agreement a couple of months ago, the same had occurred there as well. With that, we'll vote on them as two separate contracts because that way we're considering that correctly. The first is for the connection at Jones Mountain and Yukon Road. So I'd like to entertain a motion authorizing the new chairman to sign the agreement between Pickens County and LJ Gilmer County Water and Sewer Authority.
I make motion to approve. Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. The second is the same rate, same length of term. Both are effective on July 1st, 2024. It's for the location at Mount Piska and Swan Bridge Road. Do I have a motion authorizing the new chairman to sign the agreement with the LJ Gilmer County Water and Sewer Authority?
So moved. A second.
Moving to second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll put this provided back over to LJ Gilmer. And we'll move forward with that. Next item on our agenda is the consideration to request to extend private sewer service into the county service delivery area. We did receive a written request to extend the sewer line from Utilities Inc., requesting to come outside of their service delivery area inside a big canoe into a territory to cover a separate space. They attached that along with a access improvement application to cross the county road there as well. Do I have a motion to approve or deny this request?
I make motion to deny. A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries is denied. Move on to the next item on our agenda is the consideration of proposed amendments to chapter 67. This is in relation to the public hearing that was done before. I would like to make a motion that we table this vote until our July meeting to give us time to just check with a couple more locations and dot the i's and cross the t's on that. And we'll follow that up in the next item on the agenda of the resolution. Do I have a second to that motion to table?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It'll be tabled, and we'll show up on your old business on our next meeting. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to lift the more authority on new industrial land use destinations. Those two were working hand-in-hand, so I would like to make a motion that we table that to July as well. I have a second.
Second.
A second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So we've got those two items tabled, and we will hear those next month. Now that's the fun part. We get to do annually. I know that our finance department has been working very close and maybe we're not as well with our audit firm, with Russian. And today they are coming to present their audit presentation for 2023 audit year. And I am... So hopefully the flicker will work for you.
Let's get it.
I'm not going to say it was user error the first time, however.
I'm not going to say.
Maybe it's an hour-long transition.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to present the audit tonight and also serve as your auditors this year. As you know, I am presenting the year-end December 31, 2023. And there's this huge report right here you've got in front of you and a couple of letters there. I will go through the highlights of the reports that I think are important, and feel free to stop and ask me any questions, and then I'll provide some time at the end for questions as well. But I'm going to go through the highlights through my presentation. We perform... We perform our audits, and of course we come and we test transactions and go through your internal control, and we look to see if things are on the up and up when it comes to your policies, internal control, segregation duties, and those type of things. We did that and worked with your finance department. They did a phenomenal job getting us the information we need. We appreciate that. As you know, it is Pickens County responsibility, the management's responsibility for these financial statements. We issue our audit opinion under government auditing standards, and our job is to issue an opinion on those. And so we don't look at every transaction, but we provide reasonable assurance. And in doing so, we are issuing an unmodified opinion. So that means we didn't have to change our opinion at all. So that is the best opinion you can get. We didn't have to qualify it or change it in any way. So again, we're all doing that under government auditing standards, and we look at your internal control as well. And I'll talk about that in one of the additional letters. So this letter is that audit opinion like the slide says. Now, government auditing standards, or excuse me, government accounting standards require that we have two types of financial statements. And so there's two bases of accounting. So the upfront, which would be the first and second pages of the report, thirteen to fourteen would be your statement of net position. So that is on a full accrual basis, and that takes all of the assets, liabilities, and the net of those is your state, your net position, which will be your equity in a for-profit world. And we also have the statement of activities, which aggregates all of that information. So that would be your business type and your government type all together, and that is the results, the financial results of accounting. And that is on page fifteen. You would call that a statement of income in a for-profits environment. I like to go through, so like I said, you take the full amount, your total amount of assets, and so that'd be assets minus liabilities equals your net position. So after you do all that, you end up with what we call the government wide net position. And so that, that total, you can see it is divided up into three different categories there. In the blue is, which is the largest, of course, because you're a capital heavy government. That is all your infrastructure, capital assets, everything that you have to use and operate as a governance, minus your accumulated depreciation and your debt and any related debt to that, is that largest blue column there. And you can see that was fifty-one million dollars in total. Now that red column, you can see that went up just a little bit from the prior year. So that went from about fifty million to about fifty-one million. Almost actually fifty-two million, fifty-one point seven billion dollars. Now that, the red, only the red in each column there, that is your restricted net position. So what most of that, if you, that is what is restricted to outside donors, or most of that would be your SLOs assets that you had to spend. So you can see that went from about nine point six billion dollars to about ten point seven billion dollars this year. Then after you take, you take both of those buckets off of your assets minus your liabilities, you end up with your unrestricted net position. So that's what, that's what's ever left over after all of those two other big categories. And that is, that's about three point seven million dollars. You can see that went up for about two point eight million dollars last year. So healthy move there. And I won't look at the change in your operations on the next slide. But so actually moving on to your general fund here, excuse me. General fund, of course, is takes all your, any fund that is not, that is not required to be restricted or committed or in the business type, that's where that your, this is the main operating fund of the government. So your revenue in the general fund went from three, three point one six million dollars to about three point three eight million dollars. So a healthy move in your revenue, so that's up about six percent in total. Most of that is due to increases in your intergovernmental revenues, I mean grants. And then we are still seeing increases in sales taxes. They're just continuing to go up each year. I'm beginning to wonder if they'll ever go back down again. But it's, this is just a trend that we've seen over many years. Sales tax just continues to go up. Now your expenditures, even so, they went from twenty-eight million dollars last year to thirty-three point six billion dollars. Now that's, that's about a twenty percent jump, but most of that is due to capital outlay. You had some, though some of it was personal services as well, but a lot of that was jail equipment, sheriff equipment, personal services in your road departments. That's where you see most of those increase. So you're investing in your operations in the future. And so you can see that in that increase in your expenses there. Now I like to show your revenue by source to kind of get shows the diversity of your revenues here. You can see that most of your, most of, this is all the revenues that are collected within the general fund. And you can see that property taxes make up about forty percent of that. And then most of the other colors, there's a lot, a lot going on there, right? But there's a lot of sales tax going on there as well. You can see your local auction sales tax makes up about eighteen percent, and you get charges for services, about ten percent. But I like to show this because it shows a healthy diversity of your revenues. So that means if one goes down, hopefully one will, that all will happen at the same time, right? So you've got some diversification in your revenue sources there. Your general fund expenditures by function is a very typical looking counting diversification of expenditures. You can see public safety makes up about fifty percent of that. You've got fire in police, or excuse me, sheriff. The only time I ever really see that below fifty percent, they don't have one or the other. And so that's pretty typical there. But you can see your judicial makes it, so that's about fifty-one percent is public safety, general government about sixteen percent, and then your judicial is about thirteen percent. So lots of different colors there. You can see that's diversified across over different expenditures. Now your, your general fund has a balance sheet, and so you have total assets minus liabilities, and that's what you end up with, with fund balance. And so you can see that big, that big purple bar there, that's your total unassigned fund balance. And if you look across the three years here, you see that that's gone up over the last three years. So healthy moves in your unassigned fund balance. And so that, that is what you have to spend as a, as a government. Looking over across the years, you can see that it's hovered around about forty percent. The last, in two thousand and twenty-three, you've got about thirty-nine percent of your expenditures in that purple bar there, but that's about four point six months of operations. Though the doors closed, you could operate for about four point six months there. And you've got some other colors there. You've got some assigned fund balance. You can see that one point two million dollars in the green bucket in two thousand and twenty-three. That's your ARPA that you, you have for specific expenditures that you've assigned. But most of those others, there's some small expenditures that are restricted for public safety, and then you've got some non-spendable, which is basically prepaid that you have on your balance sheet. But you can see healthy moves across there. Your, your fund balance is increasing across those years. Now your water and sewer fund, you can see that the revenue is, is up about nine percent. I looked at your total customers, they're up about nine percent. I think that's just a coincidence there, but you had about three hundred and three new accounts in your, in your water fund. Your expenses are virtually flat. And so that's a very interesting, if you see that, that yellow bar across there, that's your operating revenue, and you have your blue there for your operating expenditure. So again, a healthy move there. You can see your operating income is, is down a bit, and that's due to an increase in your expenditures. Now your airport funds, your revenues are down about twelve percent. Your expenditures are also down about eleven percent. Now those are pretty much tied to fuel expenditures, or fuel costs, excuse me. So you can see that those, those much more variation in those expenditures in the airport funds. But you can see that your, your loss in the airport fund has gone actually down, and that's on an operating basis. So we went from about eight, eight six, excuse me, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar loss to about seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar loss. So that's your operating income. You've got other sources of income that are coming in to this fund as well. You have other major funds that I want to point out here. You have your SLOs fund, total revenue is about nine point five million dollars, about twenty-five thousand dollars in interest. Total expenditures, about seven point eight million dollars. So those are investments that you're, you're putting into capital assets. Of course, these, the money in the SLOs fund is restricted to that voter pass referendum. And then there were some transfers to, for debt service to, one of those would be to the airport fund, and so it helps fund some of that airport as well. Here's the American Rescue Plan Fund. That fund recognized about three and a half million dollars. You had this money, it was collected from the federal government a few years ago, and you're finally recognizing that, you recognize some of that, and transferred some of those. You had some expenditures in that fund, which also transferred some to water, and then you transferred the balance to the general fund, and that was that one point two million dollars that we saw on the green bar on the bar chart there. And that fund will be going away. And so there's no more fund balance in the American Rescue Plan Fund, and so this will be the last year of that fund. And so we're seeing a lot of that in some of the other governments as well. And then you've got seven other non-major funds. I'm not going to go into the details of those, but if you want to, there's a combined statement in the financial statements. And so like I mentioned, in governmental accounting, we have to look at your internal control. And so we're required to look at your politics, and we provide suggestions, and a lot of times we end up with some recommendations. And so I thought it'd be interesting. Now this, this report here is, we give you your basic, basic report. We didn't, we had a few comments that are on the Schedule of Findings and Question Cost. You can find those on page one forty, or if you're through one forty-four. Now I, I wanted to look at the comments across multiple years. So when we started as your auditor, we had about fourteen comments. And so that has riddled down now, three years now, we're down to six. And so I, I just wanted to show that there's been improvement over the years. These things take a while to put in place. Some are harder to get rid of, you know, such as a segregation of duties topic. It's harder to just go hire people to segregate duties and make those investments. So those are, those are always more difficult to deal with. But not a lot of changes here, except you went from, from seven last year to the sixth this year. So I did want to point out some improvement there. And you did have a single audit this year. So we did issue an opinion on your internal control and your compliance over federal programs and those expenditures that you have. We, that's an unmodified opinion. And so that's on page one thirty-four, one thirty-five. So the majority of that expenditure was in that, that American Rescue Plan Grant Fund, like we talked about, about three and a half million dollars worth of expenditures there. That's definitely the largest amount of your expenditures of federal funds. And as, as auditors, we want, we like to keep you abreast of changes that are coming from GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And so this year we were required to implement GASB ninety-six. And so you actually did have a couple of these, so it's very similar to the lease standard that we've been talking about for over seven years and finally implemented last year. Ninety-six, you had a few, one was due for your, the investment in your financial accounting software. And so these are, these are interchangeable assets that are required to be capitalized and depreciated over the life of the lease, what they, what they call subscription, basically the same as the lease. And so that is capitalized as an asset, and then you have any liability. And so both of those will be amortized down over the life of those. So that was GASB ninety-six. We have, we've crossed that, and so we've got a couple more that are coming up that I want to make you aware of. GASB likes to keep us busy and keep us looking at things. Compensated absences is next. We're at GASB one oh one now. Compensated absences, it's not going to change a lot in your report, but there will be some differences in your disclosures. I won't spend a bunch of time on this, but of course those compensated absences are absences that your employees have earned and that are due out to be paid to them if they were to leave. So that's a liability on your statement of net position. Then you have GASB one oh two, which will be applicable. This, GASB is, we're looking at the risk disclosures, and so this will identify concentrations within your revenues and require some additional disclosure. This is not required to be implemented until December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five for the county. So hopefully I'll be here next year telling you about this, and it'll be one year away. And then we're still, and then we have one more with GASB one oh three. Now this is much more substantial. They're actually changing the reporting model. They were going to make a lot more changes than they actually came out with. They were going to get rid of revenue and expense and come up with inflows and outflows, and I was not a big fan of that. I thought it was going to be way more confusing than it already is. Governmental accounting is already hard enough. But I won't bore you with all those details, but there is going to be some changes in the way that we present some things in the financial statements. And the biggest item will be that your general fund will have to be in your, what we call the required supplemental information, and there's some additional, some more requirements for your management discussion and analysis. And so there are outlines of those. Now this is not due to be implemented until December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six. So we've got some time to learn some more about this one. But I do want to make you aware of this, so the, the GASB does like to keep us on our toes when it comes to these things. Now, I'm happy to report, last year when we, when we did this presentation, we didn't realize that, I want to make everyone aware that you can issue an annual report, or you can issue an annual comprehensive report, which requires a lot more documentation, a introductory section, a statistical section, and then you're required to submit that to the Government Finance Officers Association. So your finance department did that and was awarded the, the award for last year. So you can see that there, that is on, I believe it's page five of the introductory section. So that's something that you can be proud of. Your finance department, they did that. And so I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. So it's a good accomplishment. That's. All right. And then I have one letter that I'd like to go through, and before I'm required to make some communications to you. And that is to let you know, and this is one of the letters here, and it's the one that has significant audit matters after the first paragraph. I'm required to tell you that, that we implemented a few new accounting policies. I went through a few of those during the presentation. I won't bore you with reading all of those, but I do want to let you know that there are estimates within your financial statements, and so the results can be different than those estimates. Required to tell you that. There's, there's some assumptions. For example, your pension actuarial assumptions, your OEP, these are, these are your landfill closure costs. These are things that can change over time, and so need you to be aware of those when we issue these financial statements. And so there's some disclosures that's related to that. But I did want to let you know that there were no difficulties encountered during the audit. If there were any misstatements, we talked with the finance department. We did, we ultimately agreed on all of those, and so we didn't have any disagreements with them. And then you provided me with a management representation letter to take full responsibility for your financial statements. So that is the required communication that I'm required to communicate to you. And I know I have given you a lot of information, but I would like to open up the floor to any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Yes, yeah. I know you've got a lot to read. We have, you know.
Yeah, this, this report is about a hundred and thirty something pages.
Yeah. As far as questions, I have none. As far as comments, I would like to commend your staff. They were all extremely professional, worked very well. I've spoke to multiple department heads, worked with our finance department, with other elected officials. They went through the process, that they were very, very professional, that went through and explained what they were needing to go through and form. So I would like to say thank you for, for an extremely professional job and preparation. But together, thanks for the honesty and the comments on the areas that we do need to continue to work toward. And that we, we, like you said, moved from fourteen to six, but I'd like to see us get that to two to three next year. She looked away whenever I. No, but like you say, hiring the staff to try to cover for some of those, there's, there's a couple items we can't.
Well, it is a process. These things take time too, when you're, when you're changing organizations and the way things are done, it takes time to do those things.
Yeah. But I've, I've been very impressed with, with your entire staff and how well they, how well they work with everyone and, and I mean, they maintain professional relationships and do an incredible job to focus on doing their job, but yet being respectful. So it's, it's definitely noticed.
I appreciate that. I will relay that message to them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
It will be on our website, hopefully by the end of this week. We're giving a digital copy that will get this uploaded on our website. So if you go to the finance department, there's a reports tab, and it shows each year, and we'll get this uploaded since the twenty-three year in close will be there. I do have a couple of physical copies. I know I gave one to Dan when he walked in. I don't know if you want a physical copy if you're waiting for the electronic, so. But we'll make sure we get that out in the public. So but we make sure we get that out in the public. And thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So next item on the agenda is budget amendments. I know part of closing out for twenty twenty-three, there were some amendments that we had had to be, so I'm going to turn to Ms. Correa, the Department of Finance Director, and let her go through them more as they can be voted on.
All right. So here, I guess in your packets, you'll see there's four different amendments that are needed. One of them is the year-end, the audit adjustments. This is an annual thing. By the time we do all of our year-end journal entries and stuff, we end up having to do some amendments. That is one of them. Another one is the airport. Airport has slated a project and had grant funds coming in. And in order to keep a balanced budget for the airport and the expenditures for the airport, you will see that there's an amendment in there for that offsets that revenue as well as those expenditures. That is the second one. And then the third one is a budget amendment for accounting restructure for the accountability courts. In the past, things have been kind of different. And as Sam had mentioned, the accounting structure of the way we had been doing that prior to this new software, we just had to change it to be able to make everything work properly. And so you'll see that. And I also gave you a synopsis of what that, what that really is and how that works. And then the last one is fire operations. They had a contribution come in from the Georgia Forestry. And they're just, they had to make the purchases for that, the equipment. And so they're just requesting to increase their revenue and their expenses just to offset and balance it back out.
So we'll, one at a time, go back to the twenty-three audit adjustments that were the journal entries got and the questions on the audit adjustments before we proceed with it. And that they were provided in each of their packets. And the Q and A schools. Is there a total sheet?
There is a total sheet, but it's not really going to, because it's across the different funds. So it's, it's not going to be.
One for each fund that goes within there. This for, is presenting this for a vote on here. I think we do them in the categories of the twenty-three audit adjustments. I know that there's multiple funds that are in each packet that you have. But if you don't have questions, I'd like to open up the floor for a motion that we approve the budget amendments requested for the year-end twenty twenty-three audit adjustments and authorize that approval.
So move.
I'll say. Move in a second. Any discussion or questions on that? All in favor? All right. Then we'll go to the airport second. This is the increase in the budget for the grant funds and the increase in the capital outlay. That's the one point two million dollar increase for that grant that's been received related to all the projects and site improvement that are going on there. So to have a motion to approve the budget transfer request from, for the airport.
So move. I'll say.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions on that?
So is this a match for a grant that we received?
Oh, yes. This is, this is state grant from the Georgia DOT. It's already.
Seven percent.
Yeah.
All right. So I have a move in a second. Any other questions? All in favor? And then the last is where we do have the explanation that Miranda had provided that to everyone to show in the change of how the accounting for the Judicial Accountability Court is taking place. And I believe the total will hit, is right at one point five million in moving from salary, decreasing salaries and then providing it into the other line items that are broken down, not just in salaries, but also in overtime group insurance, FICA. That way, it's not just a one line, it's actually broken down by item in that one point five that goes in. That way, it works with the accounting software as it goes. So do I have a motion to approve the budget amendment for Judicial and Accountability Court?
So move.
Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? And then the last, which is actually a small one, but we do, because it's an increase in the revenue that's came in. We need to make sure that we put it on the agenda to be consistent with our ordinance. And that is an increase of five thousand dollars through the contributions, which also causes an increase in our small equipment for that to be extended. Do I have a motion to approve the fire operations budget transfer?
So move.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. We're going to probably start adding a couple more of these throughout the year along with our quarterly. But this one should be our presentation to be the final year. So that way we make sure we've got it included as well. Next item on our agenda is the memorandum of understanding with North Georgia Community Action. This has been put in your packet as well. This is MOU that provides the MAX plus transportation for the county. It's been in place for many years. And it shows the local operating MAX, which is what was within our budget, suspected to be two hundred thousand in total, or about sixteen thousand dollars monthly. This reflects seventy percent local MAX set forth by GDOT in the transit. This was calculated and factored into our budget, but we need to make sure that we approve the annual memorandum of understanding. So with that, do I have a motion to authorize me as chairman to sign this MOU with North Georgia Community Act?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Next on our agenda is where we added the amended agenda, thanks to Mr. Tatum for reminding me there, which is item K, not item J. Is to make sure that we take a look at our September meeting schedule. September meeting schedule right now has our board meeting on September the sixteenth. I believe the recommendation was that we move that till September the twenty-third, which would put us on the fourth Monday instead of the third Monday for the month of September. So I know we can only make a couple of moves to our schedule throughout the year, but we do have the ability to make one. And if we do it this early, we want to affect planning and development with their rezon schedules and then make sure that they can notify everyone when those items will come before us. So with that, do I have a motion to change our September board meeting from September sixteenth to the twenty-third?
So move. I'll say.
Move in a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Perfect. We'll get that on there. Now, we need to make sure we get with the school system so that they work their calendar around our schedule. Keep that one going. Next item is the approval of minutes. We do have two sets of minutes before you. We'll do them two separate. The first, these were provided to each member to review prior to coming to the meeting. First is from our regular meeting on May the twentieth, twenty twenty-four. If you've had a chance to review those, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as they've been presented?
So move.
Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? The next item is our executive session minutes from May the twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Those were provided for you to review. If you've had a chance to review those. If so, do I have a move to approve those minutes as well?
So move.
Move.
Second.
And second, any discussion or questions? All in favor? We'll move on to our rezons. Would you have, I think, three before us tonight? The first is rezon one nine zero six seven five. This is a request from Lamar Parker to change land use classification on parcel zero four zero, zero six eight, zero zero three on Ren Road, moving the property from ag to rural residential. The planning and development office received a completed application on March the fifteenth, wanting to move this four point one seven acre tract from ag to rural residential located on Ren Road. The intended purpose, if approved, was to sell the existing acreage to a family member to build a single family home. The public hearing was held on the thirteenth of May regarding the application. After reviewing and receiving a staff recommend, recommended for approval, the planning commission voted five in favor, zero approved, zero opposed to accept the staff's recommendation for approval. With that, do I have a motion for approval to follow the recommendation of the planning commission and staff for approval?
So move.
Second.
Move in a second. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Don't you have to be a penalty? Pause. All right. Next item on the agenda is RZ one nine zero six seven nine, application from Mr. Mark Farmer, looking for a change on land use classification at ten thirty-six Fire Tower Road, parcel zero four zero, zero four one. The planning office received an application on March twenty-fifth, requesting a change in land use classification from rural residential to ag on a twenty point three nine acre tract located at ten thirty-six Fire Tower Road. The intended purpose, if approved, was to plant ornamental trees for sale. The one book hearing was held on May the thirteenth regarding this. Staff recommendation was to be approved. The planning commission voted five in favor, zero opposed to approve or to accept the staff recommendation for approval. With that, do I have a motion to follow the recommendation of staff and planning commission to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll say.
Move in a second. All in, any discussion or questions? All in favor? Motion cares. Final rezon request that we have for the evening is from Eighteen ninety-three LLC. It's a request for change in land use classification on parcels zero three three one four eight, zero six, so two fifteen Crossville Lane. The request was to move the seven point four one acre tract from highway business to industrial. The planning commission received a completed application from Mr. Brian Armour on behalf of Eighteen ninety-three LLC to change the land use classification on a seven point four one parcel located at two fifteen Crossville Lane. The intended purpose, if approved, was to correct the zoning for the existing manufacturing business. The public hearing was held on May the thirteenth, where staff had recommended approval. The planning commission voted five in favor, zero opposed to accept the staff recommendation for approval. With that, do I have a motion for approval or follow the recommendation of approval?
I want to make a motion to approve with the following conditions. The industrial use cannot expand beyond the footprint of the existing structures on the property. And the existing use permitted on the property is limited to the current use and operation on the property.
So do you have a motion for approval with conditions? That's where it's about, Mr. Tittings.
I'll say.
And I have a second. I think everybody was waiting to see if I could actually say what you just said. Do you have the written, to where we can put them and attach them?
I was totally off the top of my head.
Before I call for the final vote then, the motion is to approve with the following conditions. Industrial use cannot expand beyond the footprint of the existing structures on the property. And to the industrial use permitted on the property is limited to the current use and operations on the property. Do you have a move? Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Motion cares. And if you don't mind, would you please email that to this Leesys and she can make sure it is documented on the sheet correctly? Thank you. Motion cares. With that, we'll open up the floor for guest comments. Guest comments. Got to be more of a reminder.
It's good to see you.
It's good to be seen. It feels like it's been a while since we've met. All right. Well, with that, I would like to open up the floor for a motion for going into executive session to discuss property acquisition.
Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? At this time, we will go into executive. I know that I've provided a copy of the audit report. We'll have the electronic copy available in the next couple of days. We'll have that invited to the inside, you know, that they can get from the website. Thank you.